This is our community's house. We are all guests in it here to serve our community. My name is Mike Little, Mayor of the District of North Vancouver. And so the pleasure falls to me to welcome you all here to our regular meeting of council for Monday, May 26. We like to start up our meetings in a good way. So I've asked councillor Forbes to read our land acknowledgement.
Thank you, your worship. We respectfully acknowledge the original peoples of these lands and waters, specifically the Slaywood Tooth, the Squamish, and the Musqueam, on whose unceded ancestral lands the District of North Vancouver is located. We value the opportunity to learn, share, and serve our community on these unceded lands.
Thank you very much, councillor Forbes. Council, we have an agenda that's been circulated. Any errors or omissions from the agenda as presented? None? Will someone please move its adoption, moved by councillor Murray, second by councillor Forbes. Prepare to call the question. All in favor, contrary minded, motion is carried. Council, we have two sets of meeting minutes that have been circulated with the package. Those are the regular meeting minutes from May 5th and the special on May 12th. Any errors or omissions from those meeting minutes as presented? None? Will someone move their adoption? Moved by councillor Murray, second by councillor Ma. Call the question. All in favor, contrary minded, motion is carried. Okay, at the front end of every regular meeting of council, we have a period of up to 30 minutes for members of the public to make comments of interest to them. We do have a speakers list that we sign up ahead of time from the clerks department. And so far, it looks like I only have three speakers signed up to speak at the front end with one speaker signed up to speak for item 8.1 at the item. And so the first speaker I'm going to welcome up is Alicia Peters, joining us here in person. Either, or whatever you're comfortable with, you can turn either on. Welcome. And when you're ready, you have three minutes to address the council.
You. Alright, I'm ready.
Go for it.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Alicia Peters, and I'm a resident of Lynn Valley, and I have a young son. I'm speaking in favor of councillor Pope's motion, and I thank her for listening and being an advocate for parents. Kirkstone Park is the largest park around the town centre, and it lacks amenities for young children, leaving a critical gap for underage five local daycares who frequent the park and families watching an older sibling play a soccer or softball game. We want Kirkstone to be a place where everyone can play. We want Lynn Valley to be walkable too, but right now we often find ourselves getting in the car for accessible toddler activities. Lynn Valley Town Centre is growing rapidly. From 2015 to 2025, our community welcomes significant developments, transforming the area into a dense community filled with young families. The OCP update anticipates an additional 22,000 homes, and as one of four town centres, much of that growth will be in Lynn Valley. As we continue to embrace development, we must ensure that our park facilities keep pace. You'll hear that there's no space, and I urge you to push back. Instead of saying no, let's ask how it can be done. I'm no expert, but I teamed up with one. I got out my measuring tape, and I consulted a local park design company to scope out locations and purchase-ready play structures. We found one between the skate park and the field, and it's roughly, it's an odd shape, 64 feet by 64, by 54 by 32 feet, or roughly 2,500 square feet. The area has space for at least one structure with a slide and climbing features, and the one shown virtually, I'm told, measures 27 by 26 feet, so tons of room. While there are likely other areas, this one stood out as it's not utilized by other activities. It's accessible for machinery from the parking lot, and it doesn't require removing any large trees. As you'll know from your inbox, the community wants it too. Families with young children are eager to contribute, but they need this built before their kids outgrow it. If you approve this motion and commit to building a play structure that today's kids can use, Lynn Valley parents will help fundraise so that future generations can use it too. The park design company also shared grant opportunities from companies, provincial, and federal government. This isn't just about a playground. It's about showing residents that as development accelerates, the municipality remains committed to enhancing local amenities and listening to the needs of its people. In choosing the design of the play area, the municipality has a feel-good opportunity to consult with residents. The demand is real, the resources exist, and the community is behind it. So let's, let's build a structure for underage five. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Peters. Next, Shobhan Williams. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Shabon Williams, and I'm here to speak about councillor Back's motion to make the DMV a bird-friendly city. This April, I watched a pair of house finches work for weeks to build a nest in my hedge. I saw them agonize over perfect placement of every stick they added to their nursery, and two weeks ago, I began to hear my first excited little chirps from the nest. Today, on May 26, these tiny baby birds fledged. They left the nest for the first time. They're still unable to fly, and they will spend the next few weeks mostly on or near the ground with mom or dad nearby to feed them. They're extremely vulnerable, and they're just getting to know the world. I wish that I could be excited about this day, but instead I have been dreading it for months because a cat who whose owners live several blocks away come into my garden regularly to hunt birds. And I know that within a few days, despite the inexhaustible efforts of their dedicated parents, all of these baby birds will be dead. I've written to the owners twice. They don't care, and because there's no bylaw in our city about containing outdoor cats, I am helpless. Cities like Victoria, Toronto, Calgary, London, and many others have banned roaming outdoor cats. Restrictions like this are a no-brainer in our city for three reasons. Number one, in North America, between 1 and 4 billion birds are killed by outdoor cats every single year. That might seem like an abstract number, but imagine if 4 billion humans died needlessly every year. It seems a little bit more problematic. Cats are not a natural part of the food chain. They are not killing birds to survive. It's simply a waste of death. And yet, in Canada, cats are the biggest cause of bird mortality outside of habitat loss. Bird populations are already in serious decline. Studies show we've lost 30% of all of our birds in North America since 1970. We cannot afford to lose more. The number two reason, statistically, the average lifespan of an outdoor cat is two years. We've all seen the lost cat posters all over our streets, and we all know that most of these cats are not coming home. They did not evolve alongside cars. They didn't evolve alongside coyotes or cougars. They are domestic animals, and they're not equipped to survive in our cities on their own. The number three reason is that outdoor cat advocates often argue indoor life is cruel. Cats don't have enrichment. They'll be depressed. But I have two indoor cats of my own who are like my children, and I can attest to the fact that cat-proofing a yard, leashed walks, catio's, there are many ways of providing safe outdoor time. You just need to be willing to put in the effort and protect your cat's life as well as the life of wildlife in order to be a responsible pet owner. Being a bird-friendly city would protect our wildlife. It would protect our cats, and it would allow us to deserve our reputation as a nature-loving city. It's such an easy, actionable way that council can make a huge difference with virtually no effort involved at no expense and without putting any residents out. I applaud councillor Back's motion, and I sincerely hope it will pass as we have nothing to lose by implementing it, and so much to lose if we don't.
Thanks for your comments. Next, I have Michelle Sheerdown, joining us here in person. And welcome. And when you're ready, you have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Mayor Little. Councillors, my name is Michelle Sheerdown. I'm a resident of the District of North Vancouver, and I'm here in support of councillor Back's motion to make this a bird-friendly city. I sent in an email in that regard, and I'm thankful that the motion has been brought forward. I think by supporting it, it signals that the district recognizes that care must be taken to protect biodiversity. And I'd just like to extend beyond that email to speak about biodiversity protection generally in the district. I am very thankful for the commitment that people like in engineering with the Urban Tree Canopy Project. People in the community are excited about that, and I think they would get excited about the bird-friendly city initiatives as well. But I'm also frustrated. I'm frustrated by the delay in implementing a plan that has been contemplated since 2017. The biodiversity plan I'm referring to, and frustrated with the disconnection between having existing policies and authorities, be it in the OCP or elsewhere, that allow this council to take action on biodiversity, yet seeing very little of that being done. So just briefly on the delay, I'm sure you're all familiar, but some of you might not be. In 2017, the Climate Change Adaptation Strategy was passed. July 2019 was the unanimous declaration of a climate and ecological emergency. So there has been little action that suggests urgency to match the word emergency, especially in the realm of biodiversity. The OCP and the Climate Change Adaptation Strategy from 2017 called for a coordinated response to the biodiversity crisis, yet nothing was happening on the biodiversity front. Two years later, in 2021, another unanimous motion was passed for a biodiversity plan. No plan, nothing since then. And that plan called for monitoring, protecting, enhancing, restoring. And I understand the district is about to launch an engagement strategy to ask residents about what a biodiversity plan should look like. We're now coming up on six years since the original declaration of the emergency, four years after the successful motion for a biodiversity plan, and now we're going to be engaged about what the plan should look like. So it's a bit of a disconnection to me that that there's been that delay, and there's urgency. It's an emergency, and now we're going to start to strategize. Oh, no, I've got to hurry up. This disconnection. Oh, that's really glaring when it flashes like that. I was going to get to my best part at the end. So being a bird-friendly city would be a great indicator that this council cares about biodiversity. Can I say one more thing?
If you're drawing to a close, that'd be great. Thank you.
I would, because I would like to challenge this council to be even bolder. And because when things go undone, sometimes decisions are made, and then things are lost forever. And in particular, I have a specific example. I'm suggesting to this council, wouldn't they like to be the council who is remembered for saving the old-growth forest of Mosquito Creek? Which is an action you could take.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Completed that list. Now I do see virtual participant, Mr. Colbert and Corey Cost. So if we can have them moved over to the meeting as the next speakers. Mr. Colbert, oh, actually still be moved over. And then we should have time for a couple more. If anybody else would like to add their, their virtual or in-person hand to virtual speakers coming up. Alright, Mr. Colbert, can you hear me? Your mark is muted in the system, Mr. Colbert. There we go. Now I can see you, Mr. Colbert. Can you hear me?
I can. I hope you can't see me.
Nope, I can hear you. There you go. I can hear you, Mr. Colbert, clearly. Welcome. You have three minutes to address the council.
Your worship, there are a couple of things I want to say tonight, and I've actually adjusted my words because I'm extraordinarily disappointed with the women, specifically who have come forward tonight to talk about the lives of birds. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. I'd prefer if you kept your comments, not directing them at other speakers, but carry on, please.
I think what I'd like to say is that I heard Carolyn Livett, and I don't know if that's her name, but she certainly looks like Carolyn, say, there were 1.4 billion birds that died in North America. I want to ask all the people that are gathered here tonight. How many abortions have taken place in North America last year? All I'm saying here, Mayor Little, is I think we have other issues to deal with rather than birds. I'm not saying we shouldn't deal with birds. I'm saying there are other, with all due respect, councillor Back, could you not make fun of me?
Councillor.
I, yeah, I saw what he was doing.
No.
So Mayor Little, I want to.
Can you carry on with your comments, please?
I will.
Yeah.
I want to say that what concerns me here is that this proposal appears to say that it is cats and domestic cats and maybe feral cats that are problematic and that are attacking these nice, beautiful birds. I'd like to know, how is this, how is this proposal by councillor Back going to protect penguins? We have no penguins on the North Shore. We should have more penguins. What about ostriches? Are there any ostriches here? No. Why don't we bring in ostriches? Emus, other flightless birds, turkeys. I am very concerned that we, we are not protecting flightless birds. Be very clear, council, through Mayor Little. Flightless birds have value. Their lives matter. Flightless birds. I would like to see a restriction on the number of flight, flightless birds that are sold in our grocery stores at Christmas and New Year's and Easter. Turkeys that are slaughtered. Thousands, tens of thousands. Let's stop the slaughter of flightless birds. Let's stop abortions. I'm not saying we shouldn't protect the existing birds, but I think we need to expand the scope and the definition of birds. You know, back in the day, a woman was called a bird. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, I find that comment to be offside. Yeah, thank you very much. Sorry that, I don't know why that took such a personal turn there. Apologies. The next speaker I have is Dr. Corey Cost. When you're ready, you have three minutes to address the council.
I assume you can see and hear me, okay?
Yes, I can. Welcome.
Okay. Well, what I hold in my hand is a little bag called a Betty Bag, which was issued, I think, to a large number of residents in the district decades ago. And this bag has been through many uses, not quite the thousands that some people say they can have, but probably approaching close to 1,000 over the 20 or 30 years that I've used this. So it'd be nice if the district would issue new ones to the whole municipality as they have in the past. But it's a lead-in to the issue of having bird-friendliness municipalities. And for that, in a positive light, I would like the council to possibly substitute window plaques freely, maybe to all those who attend a council meeting in the chambers, or maybe even more generally, to all of our residents and all of our households to put on windows to reduce the number of birds that crash into our windows. I know from experience that my home has experienced that, and I've tried to mediate that as much as possible. But that's one thing. Yes, I do encourage cats to be staying indoors because they live longer and happier life, but there is a problem here. And it isn't always clear one side or the other is going to sway council. But the problem is there are many rodents that are caught by our cats. And they are a problem, and I don't think the chemical way to go is the solution. So consider that aspect carefully before making a decision on this matter. There are other things at play here, as it were, and that's a pun. So I hope it's useful to your deliberations on, on this matter, and look forward to a positive outcome. Thank you.
Your comments, Corey Cost. Would anybody else like to speak in the public input period, virtual hands or in person? Okay, so now we're going to move on with this evening's agenda. Right, council, we have no recognitions, delegations, releases of closed meeting decisions, or committee of the whole reports. We're moving on to item eight. This is reports from councillor staff, and the first item up for discussion is 8.1 Development Permit 1624 for 100 Forrester Street. I do have a speaker from the public that's signed up to speak in favor of the item, so I'm going to invite Colin Armstrong to come up to the tables here in person. And welcome. When you're comfortable, you have three minutes to address the council.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Little and councillors. My name's Colin Armstrong. I am CEO of H-Tech. It's a clean technology company that used to be based in North Vancouver. So thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Transportation is British Columbia's largest source of greenhouse gas emissions, and decarbonization is essential achieving our climate goals. Hydrogen plays a pivotal role in this transition. It fuels vehicles with zero commission, zero tailpipe emissions, just water vapor. And it is especially suited for heavy-duty applications where battery electric solutions just won't do the job. This proposal, sorry, this proposed facility will capture 15 tonnes per day of by-product hydrogen that would otherwise be vented and lost. By converting the untapped resource into clean usable fuel, we're enabling an essential shift to low-carbon transportation. As the first hydrogen liquefaction plant in Western Canada, this project is part of the critical infrastructure needed for a reliable supply chain that supports the adoption of hydrogen-powered fleets. And it's not just a local investment. It's a bold step toward positioning our region as a national leader in clean mobility. H-Tech's roots run deep in North Vancouver. Many of us, myself, been here since 1967, live here. We're neighbors. We're proud to bring this project forward, not just for its environmental benefits, but for the future that we're building together in a sustainable way. My team and I welcome your questions, feedback, and dialogue. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, so on item 8.1, we have comment from staff for council deliberations.
Yes, good evening, your worship, and member of council. I'd like to just add to staff's opening remark to this item. So, so for your consideration tonight is Development Permit 16.24 for hydrogen liquefaction facility located at 100 Forrester Street. The facility would convert waste hydrogen from the adjacent Urco plant into liquid hydrogen fuel to use in zero-emission transportation. The site plan and location of the facility is shown on the slide. The proposed use required a site-specific rezoning, and that rezoning was approved by council on July 10, 2023. Since that time, the applicant then followed our development application, development approval process by submitting a development permit application. The required development permits, in this case, requires form and character for industrial development, energy and water conservation, and GHG emission reduction, protection from flood hazard, hazard, and stream site protection. This application has been evaluated against all four applicable DPA guidelines and found supportable. In particular, the technical design element includes high-performing insulation and passive design energy features. The facility, the facility also include elevated equipments to address potential flood risk. And then the proposal include tree planting and habitat restoration. So in addition to the public engagement occurred during the rezoning phase, another round of public consultation took place during this DP phase. Staff received some questions regarding hydrogen fueling and safety, and staff provided response that the facility needs the required safety standards, and then the peer review, the risk assessment done at the rezoning stage found any potential risk to be extremely low. But we also emphasized that as our development approval process is sequential, with each subsequent stage of permitting process requiring more detailed information that the professionally authored final safety report will be independently reviewed at the building permit stage. So Mayor and council, with that, this development permit meets all applicable DPA guidelines and aligns with our OCP and economic development strategy. And we are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Shan Tsang. Councillor Hanson, you're first in the queue. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Murray, will you second? Thank you. Councillor Hanson, your comments.
Yeah, thank you very much. Keep this very brief. What's at issue is issuing a development permit. This is a development permit that complies with zoning. That zoning bylaw was approved in 2023. The matter was debated and assessed by this council at that time. This development, development permit complies with the development permit guidelines applicable to the zoning. And for those reasons, I see no reason not to issue this development permit.
Councillor Murray, additional comments?
Nothing. Much more in addition. I'm just wondering about the construction phase. How long is it going to take to, is there, what, do we have a length of time?
So I may start from the approval process perspective. We haven't yet received a building permit application. And with the building permit, we are going to do the final risk assessment and securing all the engineering servicing agreement on the off, all the off-site servicing requirements. So that in itself will take some time, and then the actual construction phase, I think that question should be directed to the applicant.
I'm just wondering about the timeline in regards to other work that's going on in the area. There's a significant amount of development that's happening right now. We've given approval to a residential housing development. And I'm just wondering, that area is very congested, so I'm just wondering what your timeline is going forward versus Chemtrades versus the residential development in the area, just trying to understand what we're up against. I'm a resident of that area, so I'm personally interested as well. So you can just come up to the front if you want. If there's someone that wants to come up. How long does something like this take? We don't often get these applications.
Yeah, sure. My name's Melissa McKinnon. I'm a director at H-Tech. The current plan is our next stage would be detailed design. So we'd have about a year of detailed design where we would also be preparing our building permit. Based on that timeframe, we're expecting our start of production to be April 2028. So construction would start, would not start before a year from now.
So then how does that align with, I know we're going to a rezoning application with Chemtrade, and when's that coming in?
So I can say that we haven't received any application yet, so I, that, that much I can confirm.
But theoretically, those two projects in the same area could be happening at the same time.
It's, it's possible.
I think it's important for us to understand what we're getting ourselves into. We've got a, a large development that's underway right now. We've got another very large development that's underway. There's a Metro Vancouver Housing Project that is, they're planning for us. There's a number of significant projects that you may or may not know about that are all going to happen, it sounds like simultaneously. We've got a little tiny area to squeeze into the Seymour over the river. And so I think it's really important that the management of all of these projects, three of which have already been approved, or four, actually, sorry, yours has been approved too, so four. And then we're waiting on the Chemtrade project, which is a significant project as well, if that zoning goes through. So I just think we all need to understand where we're at and what's, what we're up against. So that's why I asked the question. So I think I, I'd just like councillor staff to report back on that management of all of those projects and how that circulation in the community is going to be achieved. It's a very busy place, and the Seymour is constrained by two entrances in and out. So I think it's something that we really need to keep top of mind, but also.
Comment from Mr. Milburn.
Your worship, and just to raise the matter, staff definitely do look very carefully at the construction traffic management plans. More typically, the building permit stage wants details around where the construction would occur, where the deliveries will be occurring, what, what time of day and so on, and those are secured through the permit process. We've taken note of the concern, and so that when Chemtrade, when and if they do bring forward a rezoning application, we can raise that issue as well in terms of the overall timing and report back to council once more details are known.
That permit's going to come back to council?
It's a rezoning, your worship, so it would have to go through council.
No, I'm talking about this permit for this project.
Building permit.
The building permit.
Yeah, no, the building permit won't, will be subject to CBO approval, but I think the construction management plan is part of the.
But I think the construction management plan is part of the covenant that's secured in this rezoning approval by council. So.
Okay, so because of that, I think it's important for council to understand just the management of all of those projects and how they're going to be coordinated going forward. And I think that's important information that we be kept up to date with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next councillor Mo.
Thank you, staff, for the report. For these types of projects, I kind of look at three elements. First, the safety standards. I'm happy with the staff's report that this project will meet the latest safety standards and I'm also comfortable that there'll be a final safety report that's peer reviewed prior to the issuance of the building permit. Also considered the economic benefit, I see from the report, there's fifty new full time positions as a result of this expansion. And there's also offsite improvements. So that's a benefit to the district. And then finally, as first speaker said, you know, like our hydrogen is a more environmental fuel. So we need to do what we can for that. So I support the staff's recommendation to issue the development permit. Thank you.
Very much. Just my own comments on the matter. I'm supportive of the DP and always love a good science project. So this is a definitely an interest to bring that scientific community onto the North Shore and, and at this kind of capacity with the potential to make a very significant difference as Mr. Armstrong said, for particularly for scalable uses, for getting non-carpet options for scale uses. Having said that, I still always have a challenge and it's probably frustrating to the group that I always point out some little thing I'm uncomfortable with. That it's always bothers me a little bit that this is probably a, an industry by regulation that only functions with subsidized electricity. It's a very thirsty customer to cryogenically cool hydrogen and, and put it into fuel cells. And in the province of B C, we have subsidized electricity. In fact, the rate for industrial customers is about seven and a half cents per kilowatt hour. In the United States, the rates are much higher as, and so we're kind of creating a bit of a market or a demand in our area by subsidizing down the rate to some degree. And that should be noted that that's a contribution from the people of the province of B C into that. And there should be clear benefits back to the people of the province of B C for using that, that rate. And so just as, you know, comparison, my commercial rates, you know, my, my home rate is about nine point two cents per kilowatt hour. If you get to stage two, it's about fourteen cents per kilowatt hour. But if you're in the middle of California in, in, you know, an overnight peak hour, it can be up to forty two cents per kilowatt hour. And, and so then the non, the, the subsidy can, can be quite significant. And it's kind of the only reason why it's coming here or potentially into Quebec, where they also have a major hydroelectric subsidy into electricity. And so it's always a bit of a challenge for me that I want to get the biggest bang for our public buck when we're all the ones investing in the capital to produce that hydroelectric energy. And I think if we looked at it as a limited resource, maybe we would value it a little bit differently or expect a higher rate of benefit back to, to the province for, for our corporate investment into it. Having said all of that, I do think there is potential for, as, as was said, scaled up, if you want to get trains and boats and large, big, heavy things off of carbon sources, you can't do it with batteries because the batteries themselves become so heavy that they interrupt your ability to, to have an efficient use of the energy. Whereas tanks of fuel cell hydrogen, you can actually have a very large amount stored and it doesn't necessarily scale up the same way. You can, you can efficiently grow the systems. And so it does have potential to address that. I think it's an interesting science experiment. I do want to always keep reminding that it's probably in part because of the amazing investment in B C hydro and our own public infrastructure made by the people of B C that this is possible. However, now that it is possible, then we want to, we want to use it in ways that are interesting and beneficial to us. I just worry that sometimes we're going to be exporting the benefit of the completed fuel cells to other regions where they couldn't do this because they don't have the same kind of low cost energy. So. But all that to say, I'm being a little wordy on this one, but I will be supportive of it going forward. And so I'll be supporting the issuance of the development permit in this case. Councillor Murray, is that a second time speaking or is that?
Yeah, because now you've got me going on the science project, but, and I'm going to, I'm going to defend them a little bit, Mayor Little, because that was one of the reasons that Hooker Chemicals first came to this community was because they also had subsidized power. And it's one of the reasons why they stay. And I haven't heard you talk about that over the years. But I'm sure when we talk about a rezoning application that Mayor may not come forward, you'll bring that up too. I, I guess my question is, and yes, we have now have Site C operating. But do you worry about the future of hydroelectric power, given the state of our climate, the uncertainty and the fact that the alternatives to power real, I mean, you're, you're ramping it up. But you know, hydro really hasn't ramped up alternatives. We have not, they have not pushed that envelope. They've been focusing on hydroelectric power more. You know, why don't, and I've, I've asked this over the years, you know, why don't we have solar panels on every single municipal building, on every single residential building? Because the batteries, the storage, all of those things, but why haven't we looked at how to do that, especially for municipal buildings? That's a bit of a rhetorical question, but it is, it is something that maybe the science experiment might solve. So we'll, we'll see, but it's, I think it's, it's interesting that it's, that we're talking about it, that it's here, it's in our community. We are a port, we have industry. It's important to, to protect that port and maintain this type of industrial use. I'm, I'm very supportive of the, of the industrial use of the, of the port and the type of jobs that it does bring to the community. I'll be listening to see what he says about that, that public hearing that Mayor may not come forward. Yes, come on.
Oh, those, those were entirely rhetorical.
Oh, but maybe, I'm just curious about the water.
I, I would be curious. I do have a question, Mr. Armstrong, if I may. You know, councillor Murray raises the point of construction traffic management. Are there ways to utilize the waterway in the neighboring deep shore port facilities to move as much material to the product, to the site as possible by the water rather than by the roads?
Yes, we are looking into whether we can transport some of the equipment via barge and tug.
Or rail.
And yes. Yeah, rail. I don't think we've looked into rail, but definitely into the barge side of things. And so that absolutely, and that comes in the whole development plan of the construction phase of it. And, but maybe to address your two questions. I'm not sure it's exactly what you call a science experiment, just to not classify it wrong. I mean, there's, it's a multi-billion dollar industry, liquid hydrogen. Very expensive rocket ships have a lot of it strapped to it and it's used in glass manufacturing, chip manufacturing, solar voltaic manufacturing, hydrogenation of food. And all sorts of other things. So just to classify a three hundred million dollar investment is not a science project. To be clear, but we will be learning a lot. It's not a knowledge base that B C people have in the handling of hydrogen such as this. So from that perspective, there is definitely good learning on it. Your question about using too much electricity? I think B C has been built largely on that low cost electricity and we need to continue it. At the same time, we need to think about the best uses of it, absolutely. So, you know, is LNG the best use of it for export, right? Is local production for the forest industry like Erko use it? You know, they've been doing that for a long time. It supports local business. We're enhancing that. But going back to your, one of our firm beliefs on why we're doing hydrogen fuel cell vehicles is because electricity is not the only pathway to get that zero emission. We can make it from biomass, can, you can make it from methane, whether it's renewable or fossil and sequester that carbon. It gives you a whole pathway of managing that. So you actually have to produce less electricity in your local region, state or province. Without, and then have a path to zero transportation. When you think about the scope needed for driving buses and trucks and trains, you need a lot of electricity and you need to have alternatives. Because for one, the grid is not suitable for ramping up at that speed. And this hydrogen provides another pathway. We're starting with byproduct. And there is other alternatives and pathways to get that fuel. And so, so we think we're, we're partly addressing that need for more electricity or using electricity better. Yes, this first project takes a bit to do the cryogenics, but it's helps with the distribution allows a pathway of a fuel that's being vented. So. Hope that answered your two questions.
No, I, I just, I, I certainly didn't mean to take, take, well, no, well, what I will say is I actually hold a science experiment in a very hard, high regard when it spawns a thousand other science projects for Canadian businesses. I'm, I'm, I'm not disregarding it at all. I, I think that that's very good. But thank you very much for your, your additional information there. Thank you.
I didn't have a clock. It's nice.
Council, I see no further speakers on the matter. I'm prepared to call the question. All question, all in favor, contrary minded, motion is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item up for discussion is the eight point two business license framework for residential rental properties. I understand we have about a ten minute presentation from staff to start us off on this discussion.
Your worship, if I might provide some introductory comments before the staff presentation?
Yes, Miss Atta, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Just as our planners get ready, thank you so much. This proposal before council includes some proposed business license and related bylaw amendments. So this is related to residential rentals. So we know that rentals, housing is a very important part of housing in the district and other places. This might include things like apartment buildings that are purpose built rentals. It might include, does include secondary suites, coach houses, as well as condominium strata units that people rent out. So this together is the residential rental framework. This work follows on a council workshop that John Maselli will touch on in a moment. Back in January, when council considered both short term rentals and long term rentals. And we know that short term rentals have progressed to have a regulations in effect. It's also the next item on, on the agenda tonight. Short term rentals, council will have heard, are considered businesses. They're defined that way in our business license bylaw as, as for gain or profit. Renting out a property is similar according to our bylaw in this respect for gain or profit, although we realize that there are all kinds of circumstances for people who own and rent out units. These were some of the comments that council gave at the workshop in January, which staff have endeavored to reflect in this draft proposal and bylaw set for you today.
Thank you. Welcome.
And members of the public, my name is John Maselli and I'm a planner in the community planning department at the district. I'm here this evening to present a proposed update to our existing business licensing regulations for residential rental properties in our community. The presentation being presented is an updated version of the one included in the agenda package as additional information has been added, which was considered helpful for this overview. The presentation will take approximately ten minutes. We'll review the background leading to this proposal, the key features of a proposed licensing framework, its main objectives and a proposed fees and compliance approach. So the proposed licensing framework revisits a topic that was discussed at the council workshop held on January twentieth, twenty twenty five. And during that workshop, staff presented an early concept for updating regulations concerning the licensing of residential rental properties. The district does have existing bylaws that regulate the licensing of certain rentals, primarily purpose built apartment buildings. However, the current framework has limitations. Our records show that in twenty twenty four, only fifteen business licenses were issued for purpose built rental buildings. This suggests about a significant number of these, as well as other types of residential rental properties operating as businesses are currently unlicensed. So this proposal seeks to address these current limitations. The framework being proposed today focuses on residential rental properties that are being operated as a business activity for gain or profit as opposed to smaller scale situations such as mortgage helper properties like secondary suites. A business license would be required under two circumstances. First, for owners of all purpose built residential rental buildings with an exemption applying for buildings owned by nonprofit societies. And second, a license would be required for owners who are renting out dwelling units on two or more separate residential rental properties located within the district. And for the purposes of this licensing update, a residential rental property refers to a property containing one or more dwelling units that are subject to a residential tenancy agreement under the provincial residential tenancy act. So in response to previous council feedback, a key aspect of this targeted approach involves the specific exemptions here shown on the slide designed to avoid burdening individual homeowners. As shown on the left, a business license would not be required for dwelling units such as secondary suites or coach houses that are located on an owner's principal residence property. In addition, these principal residence properties themselves are not counted towards the two property target mentioned for other rental properties. Owners who are renting out only one residential rental property, for example, a single strata unit or a rented house that is not their principal residence would also be exempt under this framework. So this really helps to focus the licensing requirement on more extensive rental operations. To provide some clarity on how this applies, let's look at a few examples of who would need a license. In this first example, an owner of a fifty unit purpose built rental apartment building would require a license because it is a purpose built rental building and this is the current practice in the district. If a property owner rents out one strata unit and also a separate single family home and they don't live in either of these, they would need a license as they are operating two distinct residential rental properties. Similarly, an owner renting out two separate residential strata units, neither being their principal residence, would also require a business license. And the same would apply for an owner renting out two separate single family properties. Now, for examples of who would not need a license under this proposal, an owner who lives in their main dwelling unit and rents out both a secondary suite and a coach house located on that same principal residence property would be exempt. And another example, if a property owner lives in their main home and rents out a secondary suite there and they also own and rent out one single family home elsewhere in the district, they would still be exempt. And this is because the principal residence property and its units don't count towards the two rental property threshold and they are only operating one other residential rental property. So that is below the two property threshold. The primary goal of this updated framework is to modernize our existing regulations. The aim is to establish clear, consistent and enforceable licensing requirements specifically for those rental properties operating as more significant businesses. And this initiative will help us achieve four key objectives. First, to establish a consistent and fair framework, ensuring that these rental businesses are licensed, similar to other commercial operations in the district. Second, to ensure compliance with district bylaws related to health and safety, B C building code and maintenance standards. And staff have the ability to refuse, suspend or cancel applications which do not comply with this requirement. Staff can also connect tenants with support tools at the residential tenancy branch when issues arise. Third, the data gathered will allow us to better inform future housing policy by creating a more accurate inventory of a specific segment of our rental market. And fourth, this approach helps align the district's regulations more closely with common practices observed across other Metro Vancouver municipalities. In terms of regional practices, staff have conducted a review of Metro Vancouver municipalities. And it was found that many municipalities do require business licenses for residential rental properties with the median annual fee being approximately a hundred thirty eight dollars per unit. Exemptions based on property type or the scale of the rental operation are common, as is the exemption for dwelling units located on an owner's principal residence lot. Many municipalities also use an owner declaration form for compliance at the licensing stage rather than conducting inspections. And I'll expand on this point a little more in the next slide. And many municipalities rely on bylaw tickets and fines for enforcement of licensing requirements. So staff believe the proposed licensing framework aligns well with these general trends. For this framework, an annual fee of a hundred forty dollars per dwelling unit is proposed, which would apply to all dwelling units located on properties that meet the licensing criteria. Compliance will rely on an annual owner declaration. In this declaration, the owner would confirm their adherence to applicable bylaws. Like short term rentals, the district would not be conducting property inspections as a specific condition of issuing or renewing a business license. This is proposed for ease of implementation and recognizing that we would be and recognizing that we would be transitioning from a situation where no licensing has previously been required for some units. However, inspections could still be conducted in response to any complaints received. Enforcement of a licensing requirement would be managed primarily on a complaint basis and through ongoing monitoring with penalties applied as outlined in the bylaw notice enforcement by law. And lastly, issues related to property standards and maintenance within a tenancy would continue to be addressed under a residential tenancy act and through the provincial residential tenancy branch. But district standards of maintenance by law remains a separate tool enforced through the existing complaint-based process. So today, staff are seeking council's direction on the proposed bylaw amendments. If council grants first reading, the business license by law amendment would be referred to a public input opportunity, allowing the community to provide feedback. And following that public input period, and should council proceed with further readings and final adoption of the bylaws, staff would then begin implementation. Phase one would focus on awareness and education and would occur during the remainder of 2025 with voluntary applications being accepted. And phase two would begin in 2026, and business licensing would become a mandatory requirement for all applicable properties. So in summary, the proposed fee structure would be $140 annually per dwelling unit on the licensed properties. Enforcement for licensing non-compliance would be through the fines in the bylaw notice enforcement by law. The key objectives are to establish a consistent and fair licensing regime for these specific rental operations, to ensure compliance with health and safety standards, to gather data for future housing policy, and to align with common regional practices. And implementation will follow a two-phased approach, beginning with outreach and a period of voluntary compliance. This concludes the presentation. Thank you for your time, and staff are available to respond to any questions.
Thank you. Counselor Mary. Counselor Ma is the second.
Thank you for your presentation. So it's going to go to a public input opportunity when?
That would be determined at a later date.
Do we have an idea? Like, we're not going out in the summer, are we? What, do we have an idea as to when this would go to a public input? Just your mic, Tina, I think is not on.
Pardon me. Thank you so much, through your worship, Ms. Lansley. May provide more information, but depending on council's decisions to move this forward, public input opportunity could be held before the summer break, approximately June 24th, so about a month from now, but that will depend on the outcomes of the discussion today.
And can we just talk about the enforcement? Like, what's the enforcement program going to look like? Is it going to be based on complaint and like, do we know how this is like? This, we're entering into sort of a whole new department with the coach houses and the suites and the, you know, everything that we're doing with all of these properties. Are we hiring more enforcement officers?
Through the mayor, the plan is not to hire more enforcement officers, but current practice at the district is to direct tenants with concerns and complaints directly to the residential tenancy branch first, before handling complaints internally at the district. And the province has the authority to order landlords to make necessary repairs and other modifications to units as needed.
But we're also relying on our standard and maintenance by law?
Yes, that would also be relied upon.
Okay, because that's been a bylaw that's been challenged for many years in regards to its effectiveness, whether it actually does improve standards of maintenance and how is a standard of maintenance, how is the level of standard of maintenance determined? You know, beauty is in the eye of the beholder and sometimes. Yeah, we've had challenges with it in the past. So I'm just wondering how it's going to change.
I have some additional comments from Mr. Milburn.
Excellent. Thank you very much, your worship. Just a couple other points for counsel to know about in terms of enforcement. When applicants submit an application, they submit a declaration that gives a chance for staff to review the submission information, ensuring bylaw compliance generally. And in terms of follow-up, staff would evaluate it and then make a decision. The licensing officer would make a decision whether or not it was consistent with the district's bylaws. And if they were aware of information of inconsistency, such as a historical problem with the property, that could be investigated at the time. So it creates a point of investigation. Additionally, business licenses are an additional tool that we use for enforcement in many circumstances. So right now, we're not using that tool for this type of business. But if this were to be passed, we would be able to use that tool, which means business license suspension and cancellation, as well as establishing license conditions around the condition of the building could also be attached to the building, to the, pardon me, the business license itself. In terms of the standards of maintenance or the maintenance by law, it is challenging because it's a one-way interaction. It essentially blames the landlord potentially for any of the challenges that the building might be experiencing. And that might be appropriate in some circumstances, but in other cases, there's a dispute between the landlord and tenant about the origin of the damage. And so that's why we often start with referral to the residential tenancy branch because they have dispute resolution mechanisms built into their system. And it's not just a one-way conversation. We also think there's lots of resources available out there for tenants and landlords. And by having a system such as this, we'd be able to share that information, facilitate those conversations, and hopefully seek a resolution to those kinds of conflicts. Thank you.
I know the rental tenancy branch is a challenging branch to maneuver through. They require a lot, and it can be somewhat complex for people that are challenging any particular situation that they're involved in. I know that when we first legalized secondary suites 25 years ago, we asked everybody to sign a declaration as to whether or not they had a suite. And then we, a few years later, we added in a charge for sewer and water. And I was quite surprised during the separation of the utility bill from our property tax notice this year, how many people did not realize that they had been paying for sewer and water over these years. They only realized it when the bill was separated and they questioned it. You know, they may, you know, may not have had a secondary suite even being rented out, but they were being charged that sewer and water bill because they had a secondary oven in their, in their house. So I say that because I think it's really important for us to communicate, you know, not every year, but certainly every few years, we should send updated information out because I'm sure, like all of our annual fees, these will rise. And, and just keep people apprised as to, you know, changes and, and to remind them as well. You know, we've often thought of going to the real estate board to ask them to provide information to new potential property owners because it's a way to, you know, get to the horse's mouth because a lot of people just don't investigate what the municipality requires. So I'll be interested to see what the public say and, and I'll support this going forward.
Thank you. Counselor Ma.
I want to thank staff for the report. It's well thought out. Thank you. I do have a question about your presentation on page six. It says a, you know, the scenario where you would not need to license. A property owner lives in the main dwelling and rents the secondary suite and coaches. Is that and slash or? Or should it be slash?
It could be either situation.
Right, because you don't have to rent out both, right? So if you could make sure that, that's great. I like the report and the proposal for many things that there's not a permit needed for the mortgage helpers. If, if it's in someone's principal residence, I think a lot of people do that, and it's helping people to make ends meet in these tough financial times. I appreciate that. I also like that nonprofit societies are excluded. I think that's important to keep that. For those renting out a residential property as a business, I don't believe a $140 fee is onerous. In speaking with staff, I agree that anyone operating a business in the district should be licensed, and this meets a fairness principle. But I do have one question as well. Another question. Is this license fee intended to generate some revenue for the district or is it more on a break-even model?
Mr. Milburn?
Thank you very much, your worship. The proposed fee is not a tax, so it wouldn't be money that would go into general revenue. Instead, it's a fee that would cover the operating of the licensing scheme, which in essence includes administration, enforcement, as well as coordination with our other partners, such as residential tenancy branch, as well as updating the bylaws over time and adjusting them. So it's a, it's the combination of the administration of the scheme that we'd be covering, and the intent is to track that fee over time and adjust it if it needs to go up or down to reflect those costs. Thank you.
And I also note that the report says this framework will provide staff with some additional information about rental properties in the district. I always think having additional information is very useful, especially if we have to, you know, look at other bills that we might have to implement as from other levels of government. The one drawback that I see is that, you know, the business owner will likely pass this cost on to tenants. So once again, in an environment of, you know, financial constraint, it's a bit unfortunate, but I'm not sure how that could be avoided. But overall, I'm happy to support this and give it first reading and send it to public input. Thank you.
Counselor Ma, Counselor Hanson.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you to staff for all their hard work in this, and thank you to my council colleagues for their comments. I'm happy to support it. I do have a question, though, and that is I don't understand the rationale for excluding the, the second property from the regulatory scheme. I mean, I understand the mortgage helper concept, basement suite, the coach house, and I perhaps could wrap my head around having the rule as the city of North Vancouver does it if you've only got one rental unit, even if you don't live in it, you're such a small operator that you don't need to participate in the regulatory scheme. But I wasn't able, when I looked down the list of Metro Vancouver municipalities, perhaps I missed it, but I wasn't able to see another example where this particular scope is, is defined, the scope being two, two units are exempt. Well, two units are exempt is the scope that's proposed. Yeah, if you could just comment on that rationale and why we wouldn't just emphasize the mortgage helpers, basement suites, and perhaps a single unit, if there could be some rationale for exempting very small-scale units of operations of that type. Just your comments on that.
Through the mayor, the intent of the framework is to avoid overburdening individual homeowners. And while one single property might not be a lot in terms of an overburden, it was, the framework was designed more in a means of addressing business operations. And as staff reviewed, it was not seen that one additional rental property was considered like a large-scale business operation compared to many properties that were being rented out by larger corporations.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just, I'll leave off on this very shortly. But I just don't see the principled rationale for one versus two. I mean, three, five, seven, eight. Okay, I get there. But I don't see where the line was drawn at this point, and from there I'll be quiet.
Milburn, additional comment?
Yes, thank you very much, your worship. I think this was staff's attempt to reflect the feedback we've received at the workshop in terms of what is the right scale. So if it's, if it's not mortgage helpers and that, and that type of thing, if it's not smaller scale, we try to define that scale in regulation. From a strictly speaking perspective, any business operation should trigger a business license. And certainly, the taxing authorities like the federal government certainly see it that way as well in terms of the income produced on these properties that are of a business nature. However, we did receive some feedback. We have done our best attempt to try to align that to what we heard or the expectations. If we haven't quite hit that mark yet, we're happy to hear that feedback as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Counselor Back.
Thank you, Mayor Little. Thank you very much for the presentation and to, and for the report that you put together for us. I appreciate the amount of work that you put into trying to strike the balance and, and respond to what you heard when we discussed this in a workshop. So I appreciate the intent behind the proposal, the goal of having a better understanding of our rental stock and improving consistency across bylaws. I do, I have some concerns, as has been pointed out by some of my colleagues, and Councilor Ma made the point that, you know, these costs often get passed on to tenants, and that's a concern to me. I think even with these exemptions, it still applies to people who may only own two properties and rely on that income for their retirement or for stability. And I guess I question what the problem is that we're really trying to solve. I think when I look at the, the why slide, the number one thing for me is safety of tenants. And it's unclear to me how this is directly going to improve the safety for those tenants. When, when this framework relies on inspections, as it can, it does not rely on inspections, I should say, as a condition of obtaining a license. It's just requiring people to voluntarily provide these self-declarations as landlords. So in other words, I think bad actors are going to continue to operate unchecked unless someone files a complaint. That's what we're relying on here. I really think we have to attach a benefit to why we're charging $140 to people who are providing housing. It may seem like a relatively small amount. I get that, but I also don't want it to be seen as a cash grab, which I think it has the potential to be. So I guess maybe my response or whether I'm going to support this or not is I'm, I do want to hear more, and there will be a public input opportunity. So that's great. Because I'm not opposed to collecting better data or ensuring fairness in our rental system, but I believe we need tools that are going to make a real difference for tenants. And I'm not convinced that this is going to. I don't think this is going to change, you know, those, those places that are poor standards necessarily, just with a fee structure like this. So I guess that's where I stand right now. I want to hear more from the public, but I have a hard time seeing how this is going to improve people's lives.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Forbes.
Thank you, your worship. What I was going to say is similar to what Counselor Back has said. It's not unique to the district, but most municipalities pass bylaws, but they don't go out and actively enforce them. They wait for the action to come to them, the complaints to come to them. They're more reactive than proactive. And it always bothers me that that's the case. But in this case, it really bothers me because we could be talking about lives, people living in these buildings that the owner has signed off on. The owner gets the luxury of collecting the rent, and the people living there may not have any idea that they're, they're not going to be covered by liability if there's a fire in there. I live in Lynn Valley, and there's been many fires in the last couple of years in Lynn Valley of purpose-built rentals there. And the most recent fire that happened, they had a fire two years ago. And I remember two years ago going to that building and looking, and the maintenance, the maintenance by law wasn't being enforced, it wasn't being checked. And now, two years later, they got the second fire, and I think it's 80 people have been displaced. So I think it's time. I think it's time that. Sorry, I'm reading my notes. I think it's time that we try to put something in there, like even if we, we don't run out and hire 10 new inspectors. But if we could designate one inspector that in the 365 days he manages to cover all of these licenses for secondary suites and whatever it be. And then, at the beginning of the next year, he starts again. So I'm concerned about the safety of the people who rent and who rent in sometimes very horrible conditions because the, the the owner may not be able to afford to do maintenance or may not choose to do maintenance. So I just, I look forward to what gets said by the public, but I would, I would really appreciate if staff could think about that a little bit and see if there's anything we could do like that.
Counselor, I have additional comment from Mr. Milburn.
Thank you, worship. We appreciate that feedback. We're happy to provide more details. Just to acknowledge, the fire department under their fire service sack does do inspections of the multi-tenant, so the purpose-built rental buildings, but they don't go into individual units. They essentially review the common areas, exiting, smoke detectors, and so on. So there is a heightened level of challenge associated with going to people's personal residences to inspect on a regular basis. Quite problematic, actually, but we're able to give some more feedback if this matter does move forward. Thank you.
I would appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Bellmore.
I'll just make some of my own comments on this, and I've got some, a series of short, quick questions, I guess. How many instances of this do we think exist in the district of North Vancouver? How many dwelling units total do you think? How many dwelling units total do you think were not covered by business license, but now will be covered by business license?
Staff have estimated about 850 multifamily units and 900 single-family units. 850 multifamily units and 900 single-family units would be covered under this framework.
Okay, so about $250,000 in additional revenue into the municipality?
It was projected to be a bit more than that if you include the purpose-built rental units as well, maybe around 500,000 was anticipated.
Really? Okay. Why haven't we been collecting business licenses on these properties in the past? When we obviously make it available for the class, if 15 of them have been doing it.
Staff can review that and get back to you, but I don't have an information available.
Mr. Milburn, do we have any history on this matter? When did we stop demanding it?
Thank you, worship. So the bylaw is fairly generic, but the way it's been applied, and it's a an interesting bylaw. It has many variations to it, and small adjustments that have been made and tweaks over time. But the way the staff have been applying it is purpose-built rental buildings have been needing a business license, very similar to like a commercial rental type business. So there isn't some equity there. But in terms of individual properties, it wasn't tracked and and reported, and licenses weren't required for as long as certainly in my my memory, working with the district. And we really saw this as a gap, the short-term rental conversation that occurred recently where we talked about licensing short-term rentals. It seemed that this was a clear gap in the practice and procedure that the district was following. And so we thought it prudent to bring that forward to council's attention so that it could be clarified and addressed. Thank you.
Because this is a fee, not a utility charge or tax, this will go to the business head, not to the end units for the already existing places, or will this be directly flowed down to the to the renters immediately?
Your worship, it would apply to the owner of the property who is applying for their license, how they choose to manage those costs and their other business costs, such as taxes and utility fees and so on, would would be up to them in terms of how they manage the business.
I get it. I guess what I'm trying to say is that some contracts out there allow them to keep on fees and send them through to the units. And so I'm assuming that if people have a locked-in rental rate right now, they'd be shielded from this. But the business group would have to pay it. And if we saw rents going forward, theoretically, it would be built into the administrative cost borne out by the rentals. Is that fair?
Excellent point, and certainly if it's subject to the Residential Tendency Act and the maximum allowable rent increase provisions of that act. While the tendency occurs, there's a limit on how much could be lifted as a percentage, which is set by provincial regulation each year. So they wouldn't be able to essentially pass it directly on. I think there is a exception process where applicants for extraordinary maintenance purposes can seek a modification to that. But that's on a one-off basis, would have to be justified, and that's all subject to provincial regulations. The normal property that would be impacted by this is subject to maximal level rent increase set by the province.
In your opinion, this doesn't add any additional risk or liability to the municipality to to now we have an obligation to, as was said, inspect or at an additional level or any other obligations that you're aware of, because we now demand a per-unit business license?
I think our assessment of risk would change quite dramatically if we were inspecting every single property, many of which are not constructed to the current code. And that's the standard that we typically do our inspections in is current code. They may still be completely appropriate as habitable dwelling units, but not up to the current code. So it becomes more problematic from a risk perspective to inspect every property. That's part of the information that we'll be coming back to respond to Counselor Forbes' question.
Thank you very much. Counselor Murray, second time.
Yeah, that's a, it's an interesting question that Counselor Forbes brings up. I mean, you could, you know, you're giving a license to a restaurant. You're assuming when you walk into the restaurant that coastal health has inspected it. It's a safe place to go. You know, it's it's so I'm still not sure how that's going to work. So the multifamily, 850 units, so that could be like 12, 14, 16 buildings.
For mayor, I'd have to double check that number, but staff can get that back to you.
Older buildings and newer buildings, and then 900 single-family.
900 was determined based on ownership data that we have available.
Right. So, you know, I think we're concerned about, you know, the mortgage helper, the 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 family that has a, you know, an extra apartment that they've invested in maybe for the kids. You know, what's really changed is, you know, corporations buying at multiple homes and using them for rentals and holding them when the market changes. And I think that's the difference. It's not the little guy, although they're getting kind of picked up in this. Although I look at who would not need a license, the owner of a single-family home with a suite plus one other rental, so an apartment that they own for their kids, or an owner of a single-family home with a suite and a coach house, those are all exempt. It's the corporation that owns five, six, 10 homes, which, yeah, it just seems sad that that's sort of what happens, even though it's providing rental. It's rising, raising the price of properties. So, all right, well, I'm still interested to hear what the the community has to say.
I see no further speakers on the matter. Prepare to call a question. All in favor, contrary-minded, motion is carried. Counsel. Next discussion we have is the increase to length of stay, short-term rentals, and bed and breakfasts, item 8.3. Recommendation is, do we have, we do have a quick staff, we have a quick staff comment on this. I know the council is very familiar with this item because we just had a big part of this discussion at a recent meeting. But Adams, do you have an opening comment from staff?
Thank you. So good evening, your worship, members of council, members of the public. My name is Holly Adams, and I'm in the Community Planning Department. I've been working on the file so far. So as we know, council recently adopted a regulatory framework for short-term rentals. That was on April 22. And staff have started taking in business license applications. We started that on April 15 to better assist operators and meet those provincial deadlines. And so far, for interest, staff have received just under 300 business license applications, and we're working our way through those to have them issued by August 1st, in line with the provincial deadlines. And at second and third reading of the regulatory framework bylaws on April 14, council directed staff to return with bylaws to amend the length of permitted guest stay, both for short-term rentals and bed and breakfasts from the not to exceed 28 days to be in line with the provincial maximum of less than 90 consecutive days. So we're now returning with two minor bylaw amendments, which are necessary to make this adjustment. There's rezoning bylaw, 1454 bylaw 8746, which updates the length of stay and associated municipal ticketing information fines. And second bylaw notice enforcement bylaw 7458, amendment bylaw 8747, which copies that language from the zoning bylaw into offenses that may be ticketed. So if these bylaw amendments proceed and are adopted, operators would then be able to offer that longer length of stay. For now, short-term rentals can continue to operate with the not to exceed 28 consecutive days length of stay as we work our way through the business license applications. Thank you, and staff are available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. And before we take a motion on this, I did just want to say that we've just recently had this discussion. We've gone through a public hearing. This is all fresh in our minds. Perhaps we don't have to go through the full regular process on it. And so I've talked to the clerk about some options to sort of speed up the process a little bit. We have the ability to waive the public hearing. Or we have the ability to immediately have the council meeting for second and third reading after a public hearing. But we have to still have a break between third and adoption because it still requires ministerial approval. And so just to be clear, those are the, if you want to move ahead, you can move ahead with a public hearing followed by second and third, or waive the public hearing and go second and third.
Yes, thank you, through your worship. That's correct. So the two options would be if council grants first reading this evening and refers to public hearing, after the close of the public hearing, we council could immediately consider second and third reading. Should council wish not to hold the public hearing, they can pass a resolution as such today saying that a public hearing will not be held with regards to this bylaw, and I have language available for that if you'd like.
And so if that's the desire of the mover, then we'll break this into two parts. The first two clauses would be what voted on in one motion, and a second motion, we would say the language that the clerk is going to bring up, which facilitates waiving the bylaw.
So I've actually, thank you through your worship, I have actually displayed the language. At this point in time, we would undertake, if council should wish to proceed this way, we would undertake public notification of first, second, and third reading. At that time, we could also bring forward the bylaw notice enforcement bylaw for second and third reading as well to expedite the process.
I'll move this recommendation.
Counselor Murray is moving with it with a waived public hearing. Second by Counselor Hanson. Additional comments on the matter, Counselor Murray?
I know. That's good.
Thank you, Counselor Hanson. Additional comments? Would anybody else like to comment? Would anybody else like to comment on the matter? Okay, prepare to call a question. All in favor, contrary-minded, motion is carried. She's not the only one. All right, next item up for discussion is Council Report 8.4. This is becoming a bird-friendly municipality, and it's Counselor Back's report. And so Counselor Back, I'll look to you for a motion and opening comments on the matter once I get a second.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Little. And that video is great. So I will move the recommendation that council directs staff to report back on options to obtain a bird-friendly city designation from Nature Canada.
Thank you. Is there a second on the matter? Second by Counselor Murray. Counselor Back, your comments.
Thank you. So tonight, I'm bringing forward a motion that builds on a lot of the work that we have already been doing in the District of North Vancouver to protect biodiversity. This is about taking the next step, and it's exploring how the district can become a bird-friendly city through Nature Canada. Nature Canada is one of Canada's oldest nature conservation charities, and I would like to start by playing a short video, which we hope will play.
Birds in our cities need help. In the last 50 years, we've lost a quarter of the wild bird population, almost 3 billion birds across North America. Many of those deaths result from predation by cats and dogs, collisions with buildings and vehicles, pesticide use, and habitat loss, all things we can prevent or reduce. And many of the species facing decline are very familiar to backyard birders in towns and cities.
I ordered 200 hand-forged knives to my dorm room and built a Wix website to sell them.
Cities across Canada. The decline of these species is a huge red flag that something is wrong. We can and must do something to help them recover. Fortunately, cities and towns can do a lot to help birds survive and thrive. That's why Nature Canada is leading the way to help municipalities across the country to become certified bird-friendly cities. We believe that cities and towns across Canada can be safe places for birds where nature is restored, allowing populations to thrive, and where residents from all walks of life help and celebrate birds together. Nature Canada can help organize resources and develop policies that will help restore and protect bird populations in your communities. By joining the Bird Friendly City program, you can join dozens of other cities taking action to protect our feathered friends. Certification in the program will demonstrate to residents in your city or town how important birds are to the health and well-being of our communities and our planet. If you'd like more information on the Bird Friendly City program, please visit naturecanada.ca/bfc. We can provide a path for your town or city to become bird-friendly and to know that you are doing things in your community that will help recover bird populations. To learn more about the certification process, watch this next video or visit naturecanada.ca/bfc. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you. One time is good. And I do apologize, but as someone who works in advertising, that mid-roll, that's called a mid-roll ad, it's actually quite an effective way of reaching a captive audience, as it did tonight. So counsel, as you may recall, we did support, as a speaker pointed out tonight, a biodiversity action plan back in 2021. And we currently have a biodiversity strategy that's still being worked on. But this motion tonight, and I believe what's attached to it fits perfectly with that direction. As you know, birds are essential to healthy ecosystems. They pollinate plants, control pests, and help spread seeds. But many species in our community, like every community, are in serious decline due to habitat loss, climate change, and urban development. So becoming a bird-friendly city or district in our case is a way for us to be part of the solution. As was pointed out by one of the speakers, again, other cities across Canada have already stepped up, places like the city of Vancouver, Calgary, Regina, London, Ontario, and smaller cities like Victoria. And they are on the list, and it shows that cities of all sizes can take real action to promote and support biodiversity. And there's no reason the District of North Vancouver shouldn't be among them. So it's not just about helping the birds. It's about creating a healthy and more connected community that really values biodiversity, which I know we do here in the District of North Vancouver. So if you've gone to the website or read anything about becoming a bird-friendly city, there are all kinds of possible actions that can be taken. Not mandatory that we take them all. But, you know, certainly some of the things that we've already done will will work in our favor. Things like restricting harmful pesticides and promoting alternatives, while the district banned the use of anticoagulant rodenticides on all municipal properties back in 2020. And I believe that the province has 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 taken that up as well, based on on what we did here in the district. Things like using bird-safe window treatments as part of building retrofits or new builds. Well, we actually just did that with our new Maplewood Fire and Rescue Center. We have bird-friendly glass as part of that build. So we're doing many of the things, but I think we should, we should have that badge of being a bird-friendly city. It's something that we can be proud about. As Dr. Cost pointed out, maybe there's a way that we can, you know, hand out bird-friendly window deckles or something like that to really make the community feel like they're a part of it. You know, in terms of protecting, these again are possible actions, but protecting and restoring habitat, looking at our tree bylaw, which we've done before, and I know we will will very likely do again, to preserve mature trees is another way to support this. Involving the community, educating the community is a big part of being a bird-friendly city. So you can do things like host a World Migratory Bird Day that just happened earlier this month, installing educational signage in some of our public spaces and parks, encouraging bird-friendly business practices, things like, as I said, like window deckles. So those are just some of the actions, and I'm asking tonight that we ask staff just to report back on what it would take for us to become a bird-friendly city, which I think is a small step, but could lead to some pretty great outcomes for ecosystems, our community, and the climate goals, which we have, and we've made a priority here in the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The second on the matter was Counselor Murray. Do you have comments?
Thank you. So, yeah, I mean, you know, I think this is pretty simple in the sense that many of these things we've done for years. 25 years ago, I'll say, 20 years ago, we did put reflective glass on every building in Maplewood. When we rezoned Canoxie's property, we put a business park in on either side of Dollerton Highway, and that sat adjacent to the Wild Bird Trust that protected a very eco-biodiverse area on the four shores of Bird Inlet. And that was done very purposely because of those, there is a migratory bird path that comes from the mountains down onto the Maplewood mudflats. And so all of those buildings that were built many, many years ago have that reflective glass. Our first building is not the fire hall down in Maplewood. We did actually look at a cat bylaw years ago. It was Mr. Cost. I thought he was going to bring that up, actually. And it's a very challenging, it seems simple that you can just, many people think you just put a bylaw in place and then everything's solved. And the enforcement of a cat bylaw was seen at the time to be almost impossible. And with our questions that you've heard tonight, you might understand some of the challenges that we're facing just putting bylaws on that affect people. It's very challenging because our enforcement ability is very limited and not always effective. Habitat, and let's talk about the poison, the rodenticide. It's one level of rodenticide in the district that was restricted. There are other poisons out there, we have a mouse and rat problem, it's growing sadly. But there are ways, and our environment department is very effective in regards to assisting residents stratus in how they can be more effective when dealing with large amounts of rodents. Habitat. You know, thirty years ago, we protected a thousand acres in the Seymour from development, and the lower slopes of Mount Seymour from development, and that protected habitat. And it was actually based on that migratory bird path that sat at the bottom of Seymour. And that was a huge part of it. The environmental impact was going to be significant if that, those lower slopes were going to be developed, and we stopped that, and that land is now protected. Including Mosquito Creek is also protected as natural parkland. There's a piece of old growth in the Seymour Roche Point, and that is a protected area as well. And there's some more protection that's coming to the Seymour piece. But habitat, I will say, we have not done a great job, I'll take my two minutes as well. We have not done a great job, the urban tree canopy is shrinking significantly. With recent rezonings and direction that's happening in the city of Vancouver, you're taking down a significant amount of habitat on the west side of Vancouver with the land that is now owned by the Sliwetu, Swamish, and Musqueam First Nations. Years ago, Metro Vancouver was presented at their Parks Committee with a heat map after the Heat Dome, and it showed the west side of Vancouver and then the east side. And the west side was green and blue, and the east side was orange and yellow because of the amount of development that was happening in the Mount Pleasant part of Vancouver. We, I don't think we've done a great job, you can look at Lower Lynn, and we have developed lot line to lot line, and we haven't replaced any trees next to Fibs Exchange, for instance, with recent developments that have gone in there. We somehow think because there's a big mountain in our background, that's enough. And the urban tree canopy is as important as that natural canopy that we know as the Alpine. Even our Spirit Trail in Seymour was, you know, it was, the original design of that trail was going to take out hundreds of trees on both sides of a major water tributary, McCartney Creek. Council has gone into another direction in that regard. So we need to protect the canopy in order to protect the birds, in order to protect the environment and biodiversity. It's all connected. We are a very siloed society, we're not connecting the dots. And in fact, I'm really disappointed that we don't even have, you know, the history that's on the books somewhere to say that we have policies that say, put in reflective glass. We do, it's not a new thing. Why do we always have to reinvent the wheel and go back? I think that's, I think that's impacting the environment more than anything. Best practices should be maintained and cemented into our OCP and our, our planning and who we are as a community. And we're, we've always been a really environmental community, but we are getting more hard space, we are getting bigger buildings, the canopy is being taken down, even single family homes up here, they're developing lot line to lot line because we don't count basements. And you're losing whole neighborhoods of green space because little ranchers, ranchers where they once existed are now being replaced by, you know, in some cases, ten thousand square foot homes. So let's, let's protect the birds, but let's also look at ourselves and reflect on what we've done, what we used to do, and what we're doing now, and what we're not going to do in the future.
Thank you. Yeah, just my own comments on this, I mean, it's hard to find local resources on it, but you know, one resource says in the United States that on average a cat kills four or five mice for every bird they kill. And so then the challenge becomes if you're saving a million birds, but you're also saving five million mice, what new problems are being created by that issue? I, I do think that we're in an urban enough environment that you could address the yard cat issue. And, and most people I know at their house cats. So I'm sure as you get into more and more rural ends of the community, maybe that mix changes, but mostly in my neighborhood, most of my neighbors, other than the notorious Fez in my neighborhood, black cat with white paws who comes by my cameras outside my house just to look at my cameras every night, so. Yes, and he may also be quite a ladies man, because apparently the neighborhood has some complaints. But it's, you know, I, I do worry about that, that piece of, the spread of mice in particular. Yard cats aren't typically going after rats or larger mammals, but they definitely do go after mice. And so while we have had some of the strictest regulations, in fact, the province followed our lead on the anticoagulant, on the rodenticide limits. You know, we still have this issue with where the, certainly the owl population hasn't boomed to the point that it can manage the, the rodent population, and now we're potentially going to be, you know, adding this other complexity in where if you limit feral and yard cats to the point that the mice population now is not really being checked by either the owl population or the cat population, you're going to see an increase. So it just, it's something that needs to be considered. And if, if you have outbreaks and issues with additional rodents in neighborhoods, I, maybe we need to consider a bit of a balance that we allow a certain number of yard cats, not, not the wild, open, anybody can have a yard cat. We, we, maybe something that's more in line with where we have hotspots and problems and rather than just simply banning it, because.
I'm, I was going to clear this up, but.
I think that was one of the recommendations from Nature Canada was that you get rid of yard cats, and you only license house cats. Sorry, I went on the website, that's, that's where I got that from. Yeah, sorry, I got that from the, the other materials that were added into it. No, I think the report from councillor Back recommends getting additional information from, from staff on it, but that was the recommendation under. Yeah, but I think that's one of the requirements of getting the certification, possibly, maybe I'm misunderstanding, all right. Well, that was what I got from it, but so I would just want to make sure that we don't have an inadvertent negative consequence that we don't have a plan to respond to in it. And so just putting it on the radar for staff to consider. Okay, next speaker I have is councillor Ma.
Thank you. When I first saw this report come forward, I did talk to staff, and I did learn that previous councils, there were motions passed to develop a nature and biodiversity strategy, and this, this aspirational goal would be part of that, and I'm learning tonight that it's been a few years in the making. My thoughts are, we do want to be a good community, we want biodiversity. I'm going to support this, but I, I just want to understand, maybe I can ask staff a question. What oper- operational impact would there be to the team if this was passed?
Thank you, through your worship to councillor Ma. So staff have done a preliminary review of the criteria for getting the bird friendly designation. And there are a number of mandatory criteria, and there are a number of optional criteria where you get a score based on how well you're doing in, in different areas, including threat reduction, outreach, and natural area management. And as has been mentioned, there are a number of things that the district is already doing. But of course, there are other things that the district isn't doing, and staff, should the, should the motion be supported, staff would certainly report back on those implications. And there's, it's multi-layered, I, there would be implications, cost implications, but there would also potentially be alignment with other work like the biodiversity strategy currently underway. And, and so if, if the, if the motion is supported, staff would, would report back on options and would include some of that information for council's review, thank you.
Sorry, I'm getting a request to ask, what are the mandatory requirements?
The mandatory requirements are, through your worship to councillor Ma, the mandatory requirements include establishing a team, having a council resolution in support of having bird friendly designation, creating a report, hosting a migratory bird day, putting some information on the website, and, and including First Nations representation as part of the team. Those are, those are the, those are the mandatory, and then the three areas that are, the point areas are reducing threats. So for example, with respect to roaming cats and owned or unowned cats, how natural areas are managed, and, and outreach programs. And in a cursory review of a number of the areas indicates that the district is already doing quite a few of those things. I'm not sure, I can't give a answer just in terms of where we would stack out, you know, in terms of points. But we would likely be, you know, we would gain a number of points for things that we're already doing. I, as, as an example, council endorsed the, recently, the climate ready municipal buildings policy, which includes a number of guidelines and measures around bird friendly landscaping, minimizing the potential for bird strikes through implementing bird friendly approaches to glazing and lighting design. So there are a number of things that we're already doing that are in alignment, both with, with this and in, in terms of the biodiversity strategy.
No, I appreciate that, and you gave a more thorough answer than I expected, but you know, I know this will take some work. Overall, you know, we want a vibrant community, but we also want to make sure our community is still here. On the weekend, at the Blue Ridge Good Neighbor Day, I had the opportunity and the pleasure to speak with the group at Seymour Salmonoid. Okay, sorry. Society, and you know, I learned a lot, and you know, we need to do what we can. And I'll preface it, we need to do what we can, as, you know, as best we can within our constraints to make sure we preserve the environment. So I'm happy to have staff look at this more, and I'm, I'm, thank councillor Back for bringing this forward, so, thank you.
Councillor Hanson?
Yeah, thank you very much, my comments will be brief. Thank you councillor Back for bringing this forward, I'm pleased to support this initiative. I'm sure that the demands of the bird friendly community initiative will be ones that the district can, can accomplish. And I also do look forward to further initiatives to maintain biodiversity in the district and other actions to support our declaration of a climate emergency from the summer of 2019, thank you.
Thank you, I see no further speakers on the matter?
Just clarify, can I just clarify with staff about what they're going to bring back? Like, are you just going to provide us with what we? You're just going to, you're just going to provide us with what we're required to, and not put an enormous amount of time into it other than just telling us what we need to do and what we're already doing? Just like to clarify that, thank you.
Yeah, just options to obtain the designation, and just go into some of more detail with what I, what I went over this evening, yeah.
Thank you. Prepared to call the question, all in favor, contrary minded, motion is carried. Okay, next item up for discussion is item eight point five. This is play structure at Kirkstone Park, it's councillor Pope's motion. Councillor Pope, will you move your motion, and I'll seek a second.
I will, thank you, Mr Mayor. I move that council direct staff to report back on price and locations for a play structure at Kirkstone Park, including options for structure size.
Thank you, is there a second on the matter? Seconded by councillor Mary, councillor Pope, go ahead.
There has been a significant increase in families moving into Lynn Valley with many more developments and rentals in the pipeline around the town center. But there isn't one public play structure in Kirkstone Park, which is adjacent to the village. The park has forested multi-use pathways, turf fields for soccer, a baseball diamond, and a skateboard park, and is a hub of activity for all kinds of people. However, there is nothing for the littles, no play structures, not even a swing set for small children. With a growing town center and housing increases set by the government, we know the demand will increase. A play structure could take many shapes, including a small form with a minimal amount of design involved that could be accommodated around existing play fields. Alternatively, it could also be added to the natural forested areas where trees have already been removed. Now, I've been advised in my discussions with parks that a previous review and a more recent visit by staff has concluded there is no space. But I can tell you from my experience that if you ask a specialist or staff to find a location for a playground, they're going to do their jobs and do their best to look for a spot for a gold standard type of playground. That's fine, and I would urge staff to pursue that type of grand expensive playground in long range planning for the new Karen Magnuson Community Center and Lynn Valley Village. But this community, as we've heard, and as we've read in the many letters that have been sent to us, needs a play structure today. And no one is asking for anything fancy or grand, a few swings, a simple treehouse. There are countless examples in the Lower Mainland, and I believe we have some slides that, that show some of those examples. We heard earlier from Alicia Peters, the mom who's leading the charge on this, that here's one location right next to the skateboard park, that's what it looks like on the ground, the next slide. And she actually, as she said, went out and measured it, and it has ample room for something very simple. And she talked to a local Canadian playground designer, who also concluded that it is certainly possible, given the small spaces available, including that one. So if this, if this council greenlights this motion, Ms Peters has, also has plans to begin a fundraising campaign to help out with costs, which is great. So this motion, again, simply asked staff to report back to this council with a few ideas for a small, simple structure that could fit into Kirkstone Park. And maybe you could show some of those slides now, please. Some of the examples, there's one, and then there's a few others, if you wouldn't mind cycling through them a little bit. An example of what I'm talking about in terms of the gold standards is what happened recently before this council, when we started talking about the possibility of a pedestrian bridge over a creek for the Spirit Trail. Staff came back, as you may recall, with a plan for an eight million dollar, very, very fancy bridge. No one on this council supported it, and after a lot of questioning, it turns out that indeed we didn't need to have an eight million dollar fancy bridge, and it could be built for significantly less. Now, I know staff are doing their best, and I'm not in any way trying to disparage them trying to do the best job possible. But I hope council will support my motion and provide a simple structure that will make a lot of toddlers and parents happy, thank you.
Thank you. And the second, I believe, was councillor Mary, do you have additional comments?
Yeah, I, I, I think there was actually a plan to put a play structure, from what I understand, a number of years ago, I think when Emery was first envisioned. I think the location of that was in a forest within Kirkstone. And I think recent revelations in regards to some of that forest health has been unfortunate. We have a large grove of cedar trees where water has been cut off to them, and they're going to have to come down. And so that forest area has been under quite a bit of impact because of the development. I do, I find it interesting that we that we just don't have something like this already in that area, given the amount of density that's happened around there. You know, the OCP says that there needs to be, and I can't remember the the distance, but the OCP actually states how many parks need to be in neighborhoods. And I live in the middle of a forest off a river, but there's no park anywhere close to me. We have to cross the sea, we have to cross the parkway. So often, we follow the community plan when it works for us, and sometimes we don't. But I'm quite sure, quite sure that Parks is going to be able to accommodate this, a simple play structure. I don't believe there needs to be any fundraising. I think that we can find some money to build a small play structure. We used to have a program with the school district where we would partner with the PAC and the school district and ourselves on implementing play structures. And we did that because we wanted to be able to use the school district's property after school was closed and on the weekends for the local neighborhoods. It was a good program. But when they're in our own parks and we put multiple play structures in all our parks, we're replacing a lot of them right now. I'm wondering if Ms. Jackson, if you have an idea or a little bit of a plan on how we can accommodate a small play structure to address this issue.
Yeah, through your worship to councillor Murray. So there's a few, there's a few issues in terms of of a play structure at that park. So first of all, I just want to acknowledge that staff recognize that there is a need for a play structure in in the Lynn Valley Town Center generally. We do feel that that's a that's a key area that needs to be addressed. With with the OCP, a park was identified in that general area, and it just hasn't yet been realized. In the existing Kirkstone Park, due to all of the various different amenities, like the skate park and the sports fields, there isn't currently sufficient space. And there are some pretty significant user safety concerns around putting in a new play structure. However, that said, should the motion receive council support this evening, staff would take that away and would certainly look in the general vicinity to see if there might be something that we could accommodate. But I unfortunately, within Kirkstone Park itself, it's a bit of a challenge. But in the broader area, staff are hoping that we might be able to come up with some options that would that would address what we agree wholeheartedly is definitely a need within that town center for for a play structure of some kind for for young children.
I think for me, as a parent, no longer of little kids, but big kids, although I do have a two-year-old nephew that spent the weekend with auntie this weekend. And I think when you're at Kirkstone and you're watching your kids play soccer and you do have those little ones, right now, there's sort of that elevated area above the soccer field, sort of next to the forest where kids can sort of run around on their bikes or whatever. It would be nice to have something that while you're watching your big kids play soccer, you could have your little kids or baseball or whatever, watching them at the skate park, then you'd have a little place for a play area for little kids. And, you know, I think the I think that the the wording needs to be something appropriate, not too big, not too elaborate, not too expensive, just something to keep them active in those areas where, when you're watching sort of the organized sport. It doesn't have to be sort of the same level that we are at when we're looking at a park in the broader area. So maybe that might help with just finding, you know, something appropriate for this particular busy park. But I'm sure there's something that we can find that's not too over the top, that still will address the need. So I I think that this is a reasonable request and and again, you know, when we were developing these areas, you know, we want them to be sort of complete. And I think sometimes we look at the platinum model rather than just looking at something easy to put in. It may not address everybody. I think the the speaker talked about the little under fives. You know, maybe that's all we have to to look at in this case. So I will support this going forward.
Thank you, councillor Hanson. Thank you, councillor Forbes.
Thank you. Having lived on Kirkstone for decades and fought hard to slow the traffic down to 30K and also the turn on Mountain Highway coming onto Kirkstone, I'm quite familiar with the area. Kirkstone Park offers, I think it's five different sports in there. I was trying to count them up. But it's quite a few and it's jam packed and busy all of the time. I do think, I first, I want to make a comment in reference to something in an email that was sent. And that is Viewland Park has play equipment there. But in the email, and I didn't get a chance to go there before tonight, but in in the email, it said that it's in a really bad condition. So I'm wondering if, you know, part of why people are struggling a little bit is because we're not maintaining these areas properly. And so I wondered, I know that the Rec Commission is doing a report on outdoor facilities and and parks. And I'm just wondering if we have any timeline on when we're going to get that. Do you know?
Timeline?
That would be through your worship to councillor Forbes, that would be a question for the Rec Commission.
We don't know when we're going to get.
I'm not aware of the timeline.
Yeah, the need to assess outdoors. Yeah.
I think they have a draft version right now, and it's being prepared for public release.
Okay, well, when we do get it then, and that's by summer, hopefully. Yeah, anyway, when we do get it, I would like to have that look at the outside, the parks, the small parks that may be getting neglected. But I do support that there needs to be some sort of play. I will support this motion. There needs to be, look at it anyway, even if we can't accommodate it, but at least look at it and see if we can. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I was just going to make a comment here. So I know that it looks like a reasonable thing. We've seen the slide up and the slide shows that location. It it happens to be right in line with a shot over right field. It's it's 90 meters, which is very achievable in the high school ages and the college ages of dropping baseballs in that exact spot. It's that's probably one of the most common places to hit the ball, especially when they have such a deep left field. So it's I would want to look at the safety issue of that particular spot first before we land on that. But I just, I do think that there is, I definitely heard the appeal from one of the residents. And and I do think that makes it like, I know councillor Murray mentioned it as well, that when you're there with a parent with kids, we had four kids. And when you go, when we would go to Myrtle Park, it, you know, for a soccer game, there's, you almost certainly would take some of the kids over to the little play structure. So I would just say it can't be in the general neighborhood. It really does need to be, even if it's just a small spot, it really needs to be around the complex. I'm, I know that a block and a half east of here is the Viewland Park, which is awesome. I know a block and a half to the north is Lynn Valley Elementary School that has a brand new playground that's just been opened on that facility. So there are already options in the neighborhood for larger and nicer spaces, east, south, south of it. Oh, it's a few more blocks. But I still feel like you need something, even if it's modest or small, around the complex, just because parents will use it. But that's exactly where I would drop a baseball if I was trying. And so I think we need to look at that aspect of it and make sure that whatever the space is, is safety first on it. I have two more speakers, I believe. Councillor Ma, you've already spoken? Nope. Okay, so it's councillor Ma then councillor Back. Councillor Ma, go ahead.
Mayor Little usually takes the unpopular position on some votes. I think I might be doing that tonight. I do want to say I support families and communities and building complete communities that includes parks and other amenities in town centers as part of that. As a result of a resident reaching out to me, I did speak with Caroline, the GM responsible of Parks. As she mentioned earlier, she agrees that town centers need more parks and playgrounds. But that at the proposed location that there's inadequate space and that the parks already have been used. This report speaks about one specific play structure at Kirkstone Park. On the surface, it looks like a simple request. I think staff need time to take a more holistic approach about the needs for parks in the district and not just focus on one particular park right now. This piecemeal approach is not really the most efficient, and it may not be in the best interests of the district. It may not be a popular position tonight, but I I think our staff need to focus on core activities, and that includes planning the build out properly of town centers. Thank you.
Councillor Ma, councillor Back.
Yes, thank you. I I do support the motion in terms of staff reporting back on Kirkstone specifically. I think it should be focused, as we said, around the under five demographic. That's my life I'm living right now. I have two kids under five and I live in Lynn Valley. So I know all of the parks quite intimately. And Kirkstone, it is limited. I agree, the space options for for new playground, this equipment there is going to be, it's going to be limited for sure. But I do agree, it can be very small. One of my kids' favorite play structure is the one just kind of behind the McDonald's there on Sunnyhurst and sorry, I'm just blanking on the road. One before Baird. Anyways, just behind the church, the Valley Church and McDonald's. It's a very simple little play structure, but we spent a lot of time there when they were, when they were really little. These costs of types of projects cost money, even the small structures though. So I think we should be open to fundraising. And if there's businesses that want to sponsor, I mean councillor Ma, councillor Hanson and I were at the opening of the really newly upgraded and relocated playground at Lynn Valley Elementary, and they certainly did fundraising. And they've got a couple of businesses sponsoring it. They also partnered with Tire Stewardship, I believe it is, to use recycled tires to make it accessible. So I think we should be open to that. And hopefully, that's something that we can look at, along with our sponsorship policy, which I know will come to council one day. So, yeah, so I'm open to to this for sure. I think this area certainly needs that kind of small scale park, being a town center with so many young families. And I think we should look at Kirkstone, but if it truly is not going to work at Kirkstone, then let's look at other areas within that town center. I know it was envisioned in the OCP to be closer to to the mall and part of part of new development that will happen, but has not been realized yet. So in the interest of getting something in place, you know, a small scale kind of structure, I think, would be a good place to start right now for those families that are living with under five-year-old kids right now, and they're looking for for a play structure like this. So I'm happy to support it.
Thank you, councillor Murray.
I just want to clarify that the reason that there was fundraising for the Lynn Valley Elementary was because there's a policy where that's a piece of playground equipment on school property. This is a playground piece of equipment on our own property. So it's not the same thing. We require the PAC, the district and the and the school district to all sort of contribute. And they put up the land, PAC raises the money and the and the district gets the play structure. That that policy has been around for years. I believe it's still in place, and that's why there was fundraising through the PAC. But when we build or put in place structures, excuse me, on our own property, we we cover the cost of them.
We'll look forward to staff reporting back on the matter then. Prepared to call the question? All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion is carried with councillor Ma opposed. Okay, all right. We've completed the business of this evening's meeting. We have a little bit of time still left. Just checking, I don't know, Mr. Milburn, do we still have Mr. Stewart attached to the meeting? Or are you representing administration here this evening? Oh, Mr. Stewart, can you hear me? Did you have any updates you'd like to do for the public meeting?
No, your worship.
Thank you. Okay, would any member of council like to make a report? I mean, well, I should probably make one first out of the gate, which was, I just wanted to say what a fantastic job the Blue Ridge Community Association did pulling together the Good Neighbor Day on on the weekend. And, you know, it's one of those things that you don't always see what happens behind the scenes sometimes in order to make these these awesome events happen. But the original permit was set out at a time before we had that tragic event with the Lapu-Lapu Festival in Vancouver. And so it originally went through with one plan, and then everybody sat down and said, okay, we have to address the safety plan in a different way. But it caused three days before the parade to be quite a bit of a panic that maybe it wasn't able, going to be able to to happen. And I just wanted to tip my hat off to our transportation staff. Pam and Dan did a great job and also Paulo Ariaga from the RCMP in order to be able to bring about that safety plan in 48 hours to make sure that the event could still go forward. The the weather was awesome. The place was full. The number of people that came in was was very large. You definitely see a burgeoning population of young families in in the Blue Ridge area. And it was just a ton of fun to get together with neighbors up in that area. So my hat's off to Eric and the team at the Blue Ridge Community Association for pulling off an incredible event. Councillor Murray, do you have a report?
I do. I attended the Blue Ridge Good Neighbor Days in the afternoon with my nephew and my daughter. We rode the train. My dog loved it because people had spilt all the things that they had bought from the food trucks. He's very food motivated, and it was a great event. The pipers were still there. And it was a really nice event and the weather was great. I also attended, councillor Ma and I attended the Deep Coast Sail Pass on the previous weekend, and that was a great event. The weather wasn't exactly what we thought. And the poor piper got stuck in traffic and wasn't able to lead. I know. So he came later and sort of played out on the deck, but it wasn't really the same. So we heard the pipers at Blue Ridge Good Neighbor Day, but the poor piper got stuck in traffic. On another note, Metro Vancouver's just released their, the Parks Committee has just released their annual report. It's an interesting document. I just wanted to draw council's attention the fact that last year in our regional parks, and that is Capilino, Lynn Headwaters, our Greenways and what else am I missing here? Capilino, the Greenways, Lynn Headwaters, we had over 2 million visits in 2024. That does not count the Lower Seymour Conservation Reserve. I've asked Metro Park staff to give us an indication as to, because they do exit surveys and they'll do surveys with people coming in. They've got counters that that they can gather this data into the parks. Just curious if it's a lot of tourists, if it's coming from a particular area. I thought that would be interesting for our own Parks Department to to know that information. So I've asked for that to be collected. But it is incredible that it's not including the Seymour Conservation Reserve in its numbers. Those numbers, it's average between 2004 to 2024. It's been about a 3.2% annual increase in visitation. And obviously, when the chief medical officer, Bonnie Henry, told everybody to go outside during COVID, they did, and they didn't go back inside. They're still outside. And, you know, we have a, I was down at a, just down in the cove the other day, and Parks were doing a lot of work on the stairs and the trail to Corey Rock. And it was a Tuesday morning, and it was a constant stream on a Tuesday, sunny Tuesday morning at 10:00, a constant stream of people going up those stairs that need to be replaced at a cost of about a quarter of a million dollars, just so council's aware of the costs that were incurred on a little tiny section just to get up to the top. And then the last report that I'd just like to make, Mayor Little, is the Deloitte Report in regards to Metro Vancouver, particularly Renew Particularly remuneration for council or for the directors and the committees. That report has been released. We got it on Wednesday. It was received by the board and Mayor Hurley or Chair Hurley put to get two motions forward. That the meeting fees for travel will now be eliminated. That was carried by the board and the double meeting fees. After four hours, they are also going to be eliminated and then the issue around the chairs fees. That's still gonna be discussed, that'll come back, but it it's a large report on, I I skimmed through it. It's balanced, the presentation was very balanced. Shane Greg, who lives in the district, did the presentation. He was there for the media release as well and. You know, comparatively across the country, the board of Metro Vancouver makes about half. Compared to boards in the east, for instance, in Toronto and Montreal, even compared to some of the boards that exist in the region, Translink. YVR, we make about half of what those organizations make. I just have this, but. This is what I got last Tuesday and the board meeting was Friday. So this is, this is what you get. This is kind of a small agenda too. I just wanted to point that out cuz I don't.
And thank you for covering us.
I know, but I I think it's really important for people to look forward through that report, you know. You know, elected officials, we unfortunately in municipalities, we have to make the decision to increase our stipends cuz we're in charge of budgets. It's very uncomfortable. We've done it in this council. It's the first decision I made as a counselor newly elected. But, you know, elected officials in this community work really hard and I think we all work really hard. We take time out of our, out of our. Our jobs because we have to generally have two jobs to be able to live. Many of us have had two jobs over the years. So I just think that people need to read the report and really understand what the recommendations are because sadly, I don't think the media. Attention has been very fair. A damning word, the word damning was used and it's it's hardly damning, but I'll let all of you make that decision. And anybody that wants to search it up on the Metro Vancouver website to see if it's truly damning. I think it was a very balanced report, very fair, and it looked at a broad section of boards across the country and. You know, we're moving forward and it'll just make us stronger, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hanson.
Yeah, thank you very much. Just returning to Blue Ridge Good Neighbor Day, I wanted to thank Counselor Pope and Counselor Ma for being in the parade. With us in Blue Ridge and also Counselor, Mayor Little was at the side of the parade.
As crowd.
As crowd and did receive candy from our delegation. And I wanted to acknowledge specifically, it's the twenty fifth Blue Ridge Good Neighbor Day. What a wonderful event and what an example this set. MLA Suzie Chant was there in the parade, unfortunately. A member of Parliament Beach wasn't available, but I understand he was actually in a caucus meeting, so he had a good excuse. But it was a wonderful event, really brought the community together and I think serves as an example to us of. What can be accomplished in in terms of community associations and community events in North Vancouver.
Thank you. Counselor Forbes.
Thank you. I just wanted to report back on when I stood in for you with the RCMP Block Watch. Recognitions and there were about eighty people that are all Block Watch captains or. And I was really surprised because they gave out awards depending on certain numbers of years that they had been doing Block Watch. So it started at like five and then ten and there are two gentlemen. Who have been doing Block Watch for thirty six and thirty five years. And I got to sit at a table with a bunch of other people and I had a good chat with all of them and basically they got into it when their kids were small. The kids grew up, moved away and they had so much fun doing it and they're still doing it. So it's a really good program and it was well celebrated and thank you for letting me stand in for you.
Thanks for the coverage, appreciate it. Counselor Back.
So just on the theme of long running things in in our community, I wanted to recognize that the thirty fifth annual North Shore triathlon. Took place on Victoria Day, Monday, May the nineteenth. It was a success. There were. It was a sold out event with about six hundred athletes, two hundred and fifty of which were kids, but it was one of. I was volunteering with the kids' race and it was one of the coldest, wettest days in the history of the event, so there were some very cold looking kids, but they. They powered through, some as young as six years old, so this is an event that has seen athletes over the years. Go on to compete in world championships, Olympics, things of this nature, so it's 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 a great tradition. I would say about half of the athletes are from the North Shore. And so they really do, they have a local connection to our community and it was an event that was actually started by the Rec Commission back in nineteen eighty nine. And then a group of volunteers took it over after a couple of years when the Rec Commission didn't have the resources to keep it going. And so it's been running by by these volunteers for that many years and not without challenges, particularly in recent years. As we, you know, there's more development in the area, in particular that Baden Park development, I think may may pose some challenges for the event going forward. It's up to them to to work out, but but it's a great event and I just wanted to recognize it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ma.
I'm just trying to get some names straight. I I need a little help here. Mayor Little, did we mention at council yet about the Operation Peak Preparedness? I know you talked about it.
No, no, we haven't yet. It's on my list, so go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I thought you gave your report already.
I know, I made a list of stuff and if you guys covered, I scratch it off, so it's on, so go ahead.
Well, you'll probably do a better job, but okay. Tuesday, May thirteenth, Counselor Pope, myself and Mayor Little. Attended as observers to the District Fire Rescue Services Operation Peak Preparedness. And I'm trying to remember the firefighter who was in charge. Matt, yes, did a wonderful job cuz there was over thirty different agency. And the scenario was that there was a fire that started because of a tree fell on some power lines at the base of Grouse Mountain. So you had fire going up the side of Grouse Mountain and some fires breaking out in the surrounding neighborhoods. So the trucks responded and, you know. You know, practice turning out to put the fire out. A few of us were in the helicopter to see, you know, what it'd be like to drop water onto a hotspot, so. Great shout out to the crew and to Matt for organizing it. I I think it builds a lot of good relationships with the other agencies. And, you know, if we ever have that, you know, big one on on the district that that the crews know how to work together, so that's great. And I I joined. Counselor Hanson and Mayor Mike at the Blue Ridge Community Associations AGM on Tuesday, May twentieth. I've been involved with community associations in my little neighborhood for many years and. I always looked to Eric and Blue Ridge CA as kinda like the motto and how to do things. They they are really organized, they get a lot of people involved and they really have all these different communication channels. Jeff is one of them to get information out to the public and that's great. And then do you want me to leave June seventh to you?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll 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 bring this home on, once again, it's our our crew, men and women at the. Fire Rescue Service, the grand opening of the Maplewood Fire Training Center is on Sunday or Saturday, Saturday, June seventh. I I don't know the exact time, but. Ten to two, and the reason I bring it up now because we're not meeting next week, so I wanted to let people know about the event coming up, so. That's on Saturday, June seventh, ten to two. Okay, that's it.
Yeah, thank you very much, Counselor, and and I know we also have the barn burner coming up, but it's already been sold out, so that's on the fourteenth, I guess. And so we will be highlighting our new facilities there. The other thing I was just gonna add to Operation Peak Preparedness was. I went up to, I was thanking a bunch of, there were thirty agencies involved, as you said, and I went up and chatted with this guy from Kelowna. And and I said, you know, thanks for coming down, really appreciate it, cuz most of the agencies were from the lower mainland and. And I said, what brought you guys out to the event? And he's like, you guys are always there for us. When we have our fire season, the lower mainland communities send firefighters to come up and help support the Okanagan. He says. You guys have a training thing that we can come and add to, we're we're there, we'll support you guys, and so I just thought it was a really great story of camaraderie. And joint respect and so my thanks to all of the different agencies that came out to that event. I also tended the Blue Ridge AGM, which was mentioned, lots of Q and A. We unfortunately ran out of time in the room. The the hockey associations had to take over the room, but. You know, just in time, I was just just getting peppered with questions, but. You know, it was a really great event put on by Blue Ridge AGM and I know less, next year, I know Jeff's here, but. If 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 we can support, I know it was raised a couple of times, questions about fire smarts and and such. And if we can contribute to some educational resources, we'd be happy to support that at the next AGM. It's something we've done for other AGMs in Lynn Valley and in Deep Cove and so we'd be happy to support with that. The North Shore Community Foundation this week has the, what used to be called the Mayor's Golf Tournament. We decided a few years ago to make the community foundation the focus of it. And they do a major golf tournament with fundraising and it it can raise a couple hundred thousand dollars, right? Like it's a it's a really incredible initiative in the community and I decided to to. To do a recognition of Mike Bohm, who had been the leader of the North Shore Community Foundation for the last eleven years. He raised two million dollars through that organization for our community, one million that was distributed immediately in different projects and initiatives with. This year, Museum Manova, you know, it's been with Atyra, with North Shore Disability Resource Center. With a whole bunch of groups identified with different projects each year, but then they also build an endowment, so it's sort of a fifty fifty. They split the amount donated into immediate projects and into endowment. And so they've raised two million, a million of it is still an endowment, paying out additional dividends to charitable organizations. In our community going forward and you can you can chalk up a lot of that success to the legwork that. That Mike Bohm has done as the president of that organization, so sad to see him retire out of that position. I'm sure there will be other community events for it, but I did take that as an opportunity to present him with our Mayor's Community Service Medal. At a a founder's event they did this last week and look forward to enjoying the golf tournament. With him and the new president next week. Actually, I think it's on Friday of this week, so. Again, great recognition. And one last thing, if I may, I know I'm sorry, I've drawn on quite a bit here. I just wanted to make you aware of one other thing that I get to do in this job, which is the capstones. And so a number of the schools, as part of your grade twelve graduation, you do sort of a culmination of your school experience event. Where you talk about major influences of your life, what inspires you and and it it really is taken very seriously by the students. And the schools and so this last week I was one of the community observers for for Seacoast Capstone Project. And so in it, all of the grade twelve kids came and did their their presentations and it was just, it was an incredibly moving experience. Kids talking very openly about what they've gone through as an experience, sometime talking about mental health issues, bullying, you know. Or really some positive things that have happened through their time, but really just talking about how it's prepared them for their life going forward. It's kind of the the point of the project and so, you know, it it's a pleasure to go and be a part of that, offer them feedback and support and then. In the end, that's their graduation, what leads in their next project is the actual graduation from school, which is happening over the next couple of weeks, so. Very exciting time. I know you've got some graduates in in your group. My my daughter Allison will be graduating this month as well and. So it's an exciting time for many families, but that was it for Capstone.
Yeah, thanks for, yeah, and grade twelve, yay. So I just wanted to, obviously, the Silverland Apartment Fire was a tragedy. We had forty four displaced residents and there was a number of. Fundraising initiatives that were started up. The Lynn Valley Community Association started to GoFundMe. That's still going on right now. Lions are matching up to twenty thousand dollars as part of theirs. The society, the Lowlands Senior Society that runs the building is also working with the Lions and collecting donations. And then our own DMV Fire Charity has stepped up with North Shore Family Services to raise money. They've got amazing fundraising power and so they're going to be working with North Shore Family Services to disperse. Things that are needed, money, money that's needed, but also any services that are needed that we can't, you know, fill with. North Shore Emergency Management, but out of that came an initiative that Kyle Burdette from DMV Fire Charity is working on. Because people always wanna give and when we had the Fire Mountain Court. We had a lot of people that wanted to give things, furniture, clothes, etc., and we didn't really have any way to manage it, so it's money, but it's very challenging. To disperse money, especially if it goes into the hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollar level, so we're working on making that easier. So in future, we can create an emergency fund that can disperse money to the community because sadly, we know we're gonna have another one of these. Horrible tragedies again and we wanna be prepared for the future. GoFundMes, the Labu Labu Festival, you know, there was, you know, probably collectively over a million dollars raised out of those GoFundMes. And so it can be a significant amount of money, a significant amount of responsibility and you want organizations that understand how to disperse that to be in charge, so. We're gonna be working at creating something that will effectively assist North Shore residents going forward.
Thank you. I see no further reports. We've completed the business of this evening's meetings. I'm happy to accept adjournments. Thank you, Counselor Pope, accept it. Everybody, thank you very much to staff for their preparation, the reports for our consideration. Thank you, members of the public for participating in the meeting. Everybody, have a fantastic evening, good night.